Can you guys turn on your mics? We're ready to go. Okay. Alan, Amanda, your mics on?
Yeah, we're good.
Good evening, everyone. If we could start with a moment of silent prayer, please. Thank you. Get everybody here. Drew us off instinctively. We all stood up.
I thought it was time, Tim.
Right, right. We all stood. Alan, we followed suit. If we could call it a order, please.
Mr. Swager?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Benton?
Here.
Mrs. Buwer?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
A regular and joint meeting of the Johnstown City Council and the Johnstown Road Board of Education will be held by CM on Monday, February 10th, 2025, for consideration of entering into a lease and purchase contract with the city of Johnstown as well as the purpose of our planning. This meeting will be held at the media center of Johnstown Middle School, 401 South Oregon Street, Johnstown. In accordance made in connection with the meeting, each meeting of the board is an extended meeting itself, so there can be a lot of background. And we can get a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion. Second.
All the roll.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Buwer?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes, we're going to move the motion was to move in the executive session for the consideration of the purchase of property for public purposes or sale or other disposition of unneeded, obsolete, unfit-for-use property in competitive bidding. A premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest. We'll go into executive session and we'll come back. Thank you.
Council meeting to order for Monday, February 10th, 2025. Could you call the roll? Here. 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 Can we could please stand for the fudge of leations?
One second. I just want to make sure we are officially out of executive session on the school board side at 5:43.
Please stand for the fudge.
The United States of America, and through the republic which stands one nation under God in this world with liberty and justice for all.
City council members, we've received the agenda. Does anyone make any changes to it or additions? Besides deleting the item number five? Hearing no other. Do we have a, what is the will of council? Aye.
Any additions or deletions to the Board of Education agenda?
We have two small changes to the agenda. Under section eight, we initially had the policy committee scheduled for February 7th, and that shows as if we're meeting, but we changed that because of a conflict, so we'll have to reschedule that policy committee meeting. So that should be removed under board committees that February 7th date. And then the other small change is under section nine, consent agenda, item C, unpaid days. We have Jackie Cannon listed, and we mistakenly put 2025 instead of 2024. It was December 13th through December 14th, 2024. That should be on the agenda. Other than that, we do not have any changes to the agenda.
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
One second.
Any discussion?
Call and roll, please.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Do any citizens have any comments on matters not in the city council agenda tonight? Hearing none?
Any Board of Education have other remarks?
Mr. Standard, would you like to explain number 10?
Do you need this on?
Yeah.
Good? Okay. So we have went back and forth on this a couple times. You all have previously passed legislation approximately two weeks ago referencing the authorization of the city manager to enter into a lease and sale of administrative office. Since that time, we have made some revisions relative to the CAM, as well as the term of the lease and the square footage leasing back from the school district. So those are the modifications that are in the final draft before you tonight. So what you will see is a modification. We've done an amendment to the original resolution to take into consideration the new lease and the new purchase contract to reflect the items that we have discussed through committee. We've had two committee meetings with the school district liaison, and through those conversations have come to we believe is a pretty good working document for your review tonight. Any questions?
Maybe this could be a clever question. In the front of all of our public officials, there's a PowerPoint. Can we run through that real quick?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to Dr. Wagner run through that.
Okay. Yes.
So while we're getting this queued, you have a paper copy. This is really, you've seen most of this along the way, but I thought let's just do a quick run-through on this and just do it as a level set. Go to the second slide right there. Slide right there, just as a reminder, that core facility that's there without the blue-green shading, which is the extra building on the side, that's the building that will be built on the current city property. This is all approved tonight, so we'll start working on that. Why don't you go all the way down here to, it looks like the third to last slide, because they've seen all this. And that's all enrollment projections we reviewed last night. Except for, okay, next, the next slide then. So what we did is an overall map, so we just know where we sit now. So obviously that this would be the corner property with the cities now, so that would help us with our campus design that we're looking at. If we go to the next slide, this is the one that's most important. So what this is, is this is a drawing. It's not perfectly to scale, but this is the drawing of the areas that we, the schools, would now take over responsibility. That longer room that you see there, that could be used for cheerleading, wrestling, indoor batting. The square room, the same thing. We think that, not for indoor batting, but that square room probably be more of the wrestling area. But that's, I think, right now. So we would take responsibility of all that area, and that's what we would develop for our athletics internal positions there. That's not as large as we had hoped with all of this, but at least it's a start, and that would allow us to have dedicated space. The thing that's nice about that area right there is that there's a sink at the end of that longer rectangular room, and then there's two adjacent bathrooms there. I know they need to be refurbished, but that'll be tremendous for our wrestlers and cheerleaders to have running water, so we can clean, and then also so that they have to use facilities, because right now nothing against the JYA bar, but they don't have any access to running water or sewer like that. So I think that's really the crux. I know you've all seen this a lot, but I think that's probably the crux of Victoria, I guess is what it looks like. So we have to answer any questions about all of that work.
Council, any questions for Dr. Wagner?
So you heard purchase, whatever you're saying. When would you get a building similar to that except for 429?
So let, we next fall, we would have that up. The entire auxiliary thing should be up by next fall. Part of that is we've been holding, getting everything staged for the high school addition. If we want, I mean, it's a scale win, we're moving equipment, I'll try to do both at the same time, so it should happen relatively quickly.
So wouldn't the road under North Campus anymore move?
We're still talking about different options. I mean, one of the things that we're working on separately on the North Campus area for soccer, we don't have a true regulation-sized soccer field, so we're talking about possibly taking over that field. And then we've also looked at, in that area, can we get some small restrooms, concessions, and some stadium seating in that area too? So we're looking at that. Wouldn't be large. There's also some things, and we're talking about what we're going to need probably a board retrieve here pretty soon. It is going to coalesce around some ideas, but we've also talked about getting ready for, it was also time for a multipurpose building that could be for workforce development or maybe even some other athletic events. So we're going to really dust things up. If this all comes together tonight, this is another step forward for us in our long-range planning, so then we'll be able to take, look out the next five, so many years.
Obviously, do we think that our building might be anything larger than just the wrestling and cheerleading?
No, and, no, that's a good question. And in the, in the changes that we made, there's a provision in there that the city can leave the building, if this all is contemplated today. The city can leave that building in all apart from what it would be, you can leave all of it or part of it, and only use that space. Right now, for example, our administrative offices, we're operating out of four classrooms at Johnson Intermediates. We know that we're going to grow in size, so if you said to us, "In a year you're leaving," we'll most likely move the Board of Education into that building, and that'll create classroom space at the intermediate school. Same thing for athletics. If the police department were to move out, we would get back to a larger space. When you look at some of the models, and I know I just said to do that really quick, but you have it in front of you. Our initial space that we had outlined was about 7,800 square feet that we wanted for the athletics, aside from the multipurpose space. We're getting about half that space right now. So if you move the police department out, we will take that portion, and as I said, all the way to the full, the full building, we can repurpose that.
Yeah. So I mean, looking at the planning that you guys have done, it looks like a great plan. Definitely room to expand, do things. Obviously, the purchase of our building has to do how far and set that back. Obviously, we don't have a plan to do the police station and the things that we have, so we're obviously in the way of this planning. So that's kind of what I wanted to see, how long it would take for you guys to get this.
Yeah, and we've had some subcommittee work, as Mr. Standard said, and one of the things we talked about is the partnership that's developed, and we'd like to see more of the school liaison meetings continue, so maybe quarterly, because it's good for us to understand when the city's doing it, vice versa. So I think that, you know, we were talking earlier to Mr. Maro and I, that, you know, we did the compensation agreement a while ago. Now we have this potentially goes forward tonight. This is all positive for the constituency of this community. So we need to do more of this, and I think there's a lot of positive momentum, so we want to be more integral in our development. We have some other things, honestly, that we're not openly talking about, and some things that we're looking at other areas of growth, because you've seen the, it's in your packet here, but we have a, we have a plan that would nearly triple the size of the enrollment of the school district. We want to cap it at that. So in order to execute that, that, that's going to require some other land, it's going to require some other building structures. So cooperating with the city, and honestly, our compenches is critical.
Right. Yeah. So like I said, you guys had a shovel-ready plan here, it's just from our side, we'll be in the way of that. So I didn't know how much we were going to hold that up.
Well, if it's approved tonight, we, we hope to get that auxiliary space open by next fall, when next fall. We'll have to see how everything comes together, and then as soon as, you know, the city area is reorganized, then we can look at getting our, our area of that, of your building cleaned up and moved in there probably faster than you can the exterior building.
Okay, I make a motion that we move to executive session to consider the sale of property to include all city council members and the city manager. And we will return.
Yes.
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 We will return in about 10 minutes.
Eight, six, ten. We have public hearings of legislation, resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seven, a resolution amending the exhibits to resolution twenty twenty five dash oh four, which is the sale of the property ownership by Johnstown to the city or to the Johnstown Monroe School District. Does anyone on council have any questions or comments on this item?
Mayor is a employee to Johnstown Monroe School.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, open it up to the public. Does public have any questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none. I make a motion that we pass resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seven, a resolution amending the exhibits of resolution twenty twenty five oh four as written. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to the school board.
Okay, so resolution twenty five dash zero two dash zero two four is real estate purchase agreement and lease agreement of city property.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Swager, how about if I can I read through parts of this resolution? So the Johnstown Monroe Board of Education authorizes the real estate purchase agreement and lease agreement of real property located at five nine nine South Main Street, Johnston, Ohio, four three zero three one, as set forth in the attached real estate purchase agreement and lease agreement. Whereas the board hereby approves the purchase of real property located at five nine nine South Main Street, Johnston, Ohio, four three zero three one for one point two million dollars, therefore be resolved that the superintendent treasurer and board of education president are authorized to execute and take any and all actions to complete the real estate purchase agreement and lease agreement of the property located at five nine nine South Main Street, Johnston, Ohio, four three zero three.
Mr. Bente?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes. This is a very historic day that a school district and the city can work together in such harmony. I think it's an incredible day looking at the past of how our boards worked together in the past and how well we're working together now. So thank you.
I think there's a lot to celebrate with this. So we actually wanted to be really happy today. A lot of trust for these things. So administration can take care of that. City council and everything together. We start looking at executing our plans.
Yeah, I really appreciate the work between the board and the suburb. Appreciate the success. Obviously, Dr. Wagner, sure. Work in detail with these things and appreciate that work. This is for the best for all students, parents, residents of the city and of the school. Getting this done and getting the ability to build a auxiliary gymnasium right on on campus and not have it walking throughout the village and across major roads to get to it is huge. So the fact that we're able to work together to get this done is really appreciated by the staff of the board from grandparents who is on the list.
Thank you very much.
Just remind me too, one of the things we talked about was continuing our meetings at the school liaison. Someone just got some of those.
And again, I want to thank everyone too. It's not only for the students that we have here today, but this is going to impact us for many, many years. And it's going to impact students that we don't know about today. So we want to thank everyone because I know it was a difficult decision, but it's one that can really help us for a really generation. So thank you.
Mr. Swager?
Yeah, thank you guys. We appreciate the collaboration as well to say echo and Mr. Swager's comments as a parent.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that the city council adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Volunteers, I just thought it'd be good to know the board years ago would ask if we could do more to get more people into the schools, especially after COVID. I think there was some buildings got closed and that happened in a lot of places. And we thought we'd open up the district more. So you've been actually proving quite a few volunteers. And what we thought we would do is ask the principals to come up and to talk a little bit about how they're using their volunteers. We're going to start with the high school and work our way down to the elementary school. But we do appreciate all the volunteers and how they come in and provide support. I think, Mr., you're going to start talking about athletics then as well as other volunteers.
Yeah. Obviously, volunteers at the high school level look a little different than it does at the elementary level with that. But I will say the administration across all the buildings, we support volunteers, love volunteers, parent volunteers in particular that come into the buildings, work with their students. At the high school, as far as athletics, as Dr. Wagner said, our eleven varsity sports, we have, Mr. Gant is here, I believe twenty seven volunteers, coaches with our athletics. This year, I started receiving for our homecoming dance, all these guest forms for out of district guests. And I believe we had over sixty. And so myself and Mr. Grove, our dean of students, were sitting there a couple weeks ago before hosting homecoming. And we were like, if you and I are the only chaperones here, and our teachers decide not to come, which wasn't true, we had quite a few teachers ended up chaperoning their dance, thank goodness, we're going to be like us and five hundred students. So we were a little concerned. So I sent out a request for any volunteer parent chaperones. And lo and behold, we ended up having twenty parents, you know, went through our process of vetting and background checks and whatnot. But twenty parents ended up showing up for homecoming this fall. So that was wonderful. Also, at the high school, we use chaperones for our spirit bus. We had our first round football playoff game in a spirit bus. We had three parent volunteers that chaperoned on the bus for that trip. We had our winter semi-formal dance. We had another ten parent chaperones volunteer as well for that. So we have used them across the board. I don't know if Mr. Gant, if there's any, I know you're working on some other parent volunteers as well as far as the athletics. We have twenty seven right now.
Any questions for Mr. Shipton?
Thank you.
Mr. Gant, you, it all is going to look a little different, but Mr. Gant, I'll talk a little bit about the middle school and work our way to the intermediate and the elementary.
Thank you. Yeah, as Mr. Shipton said, middle school, high school volunteers look a little bit different. But we are open to volunteers and appreciative of all of our volunteers. At the middle school, we have about six regular volunteers that come and they help us with lunches. They each do about one to two days a week. They help us monitor students. They also just form relationships and build relationships with students. They also take a group during their smart period about once a week. And they have character traits lessons that they're going over with them and leadership lessons that they're going over with them, just building that bond with the students. And it helps them when they're helping corral them at lunches as well. And then included in that is the athletic side. We have several volunteer coaches and volunteers that help with our sports. And we rely on that with our sports as we only have about one paid position per sport. So we definitely rely on the on the volunteers. So we're open and appreciative to all of our volunteers for giving up their time and pouring into our community.
Any questions about middle school? Intermediate?
Good evening. Currently, at the intermediate school, mainly our volunteers are for our field trips. When we went to Intel, after that whole big event, we sent them over to the works in Newark. Had a lot of parents that went along to be part of those small groups. And then, of course, our big, big thing is our fifth grade camp. So we'll have about thirty to forty volunteers that will be a part of that. We do have a volunteer that comes into works every Wednesday with some of our students for academics. And there's a program that I'll be bringing to you later on, hopefully over the summer, something I would like to try to get started that I've done in the previous district that encourages dads, uncles, positive male role models to be a part of the building. But hopefully then I haven't talked to Dr. Wagner, surprise. Sorry. But it's something that I'd like to try. It's really, it's just a really good thing. But we are using them. I'm always open to get volunteers. PTO has a lot for us to do.
Elementary, Mrs. Wagner?
Hi. We started lunch volunteers last year, and it was really well received. We were having three or four a day. Seems to be waning off. I'm worried that, I don't know why that would happen because our kids are great at lunch. Doctor, or Mr. Bernard, he often volunteers once a month and brings in some city council members with him when he does that. So that's been a great thing for us. We started two new volunteer opportunities in December. They haven't cut enough quite as much as I would have liked them to yet, but we're still working on it. So if people are watching this board meeting and want to volunteer, we are looking for what we call copycats. So teachers can put things in a basket that they need copied or things cut out, laminated, and then the volunteers come and take care of that and then put it back in the mailboxes. The other one is classroom reading volunteers. And that is to help our students during what's called high dosage tutoring. It's a requirement by the state that our students who are on reading improvement plans have high dosage tutoring each day, which means that we're preloading vocabulary. We're making sure that they're ready for the next lesson. So high dosage tutoring is looking at what's coming next, not just the intervention piece. And so we have both those opportunities. Those are live links that parents can sign up to help with those. If there are community members or grandparents that you know of that want to get their volunteer approval and do that, we're open to anybody. It doesn't have to necessarily just be a parent. But when it comes time for their parties and field trips, we have hundreds of volunteers. So on Thursday afternoon, there will be no parking at our school. But thank you for supporting our volunteers. And we're excited to have people more and more in the building. So we'll continue to grow that program. And I really like his idea. So, Dr. Wagner, you're going to love it. And it's going to be a great thing because I'm going to tail.
Good news is I have some familiarity with that from another, my last school district. Also, I'll send the board an update because don't you need some readers still for an upcoming event?
I do need readers. We have our reading and math night will be in March, and we're looking for some volunteer readers. We have different time spots.
I'll send that around to the board. And then I should have asked the city council on here tonight. But if we have any open spots, I'll try to send that to city councils as well.
Excellent. And you can come anytime to our building and just volunteer if you want.
Any questions for elementary?
No, I was just going to add volunteering, especially in the elementary, is super awesome. I was really lucky three years ago that I was able to volunteer in both the first and fifth grade classes on a regular basis. I actually logged a hundred hours in the building that year. Yeah. And I, in fifth, yeah, Robin, I logged a hundred hours. In first grade, I got to do a lot of the copycat stuff. And one thing that they really thought was awesome is I had the time to laminate stuff for them, which saved them time to be able to reuse things year after year. So I just thought that that was a time saver, not just that year, but for continuing years. And then in fifth grade that year, I was able to do math facts with those individuals. Those were the students who in third grade were home for COVID. And at the end of the year is when they were looking for that math fact fluency, and they weren't in the building. So I was able to replicate that with fifth grade students. And then they got an ice cream party. So parents, grandparents, community members, it's actually really, really awesome volunteering in schools.
I really like that copycat idea too, because a lot of schools will do that, especially elementary, because not everyone is available during school hours. So if you can, you know, you have different shifts or you have different commitments, you can't always make it at certain times. At least it's an in and out process, and people still can contribute. So that's a nice opportunity. Anything else for, it's kind of an easy presentation type, but I just, I know the board had past administration was doing more with that. And I think coming out of COVID, that was natural. And I just, I really applaud everything being done. That was even, you know, Mr. Shipton, this year, we were looking at some of those dances and all too. And I said, okay, we got to watch the social media and how we're doing things. But it actually, everything went really well. So we appreciate all the support. It really is when everyone comes together, we do our best work.
I appreciate the buildings being welcoming too, because, you know, previously, we had some issues with getting volunteers in and being welcomed in and, you know, wanting volunteers to come into the building. So that starts at the head of each building. So you have, you know, being more welcoming and wanting the volunteers to come in is very beneficial. It helps us in a variety of ways. Obviously, it helps our teachers to get the stuff ready for their help. But it helps our parents, grandparents, and community members see what goes on in the school day to day. Because a lot of folks, you know, you drop your kid off, you pick your kid up. And if your kid's like mine, I said, what happened at school today? And they say nothing. I mean, that's, you know, so when you're in there and get to see what really goes on and happens, it's very beneficial to parents. And as Amanda had said, volunteering is fun. And anyone that would like to volunteer, obviously, reach out. There's a lot of opportunity in the district. And this is what makes Johnstown great. The fact that we have these volunteers. You go to some district, they don't have the community involvement that we have here. The fact that we sat here with city council members tonight, made a deal for the community. This is what happens when you have members of your community involved in your schools, and your schools is made up of people that are involved in your community. This starts and is aided by all this volunteering and is exemplified by it. So I know, you know, when you get into the athletics, we're successful because we have great head coaches, right? But we got a really, really good group of volunteer coaches that make those head coaches successful as well. And so that goes through academics and athletics. To be successful, we can have the greatest teachers, the greatest coaches, but it always helps when you've got a good support group and that's made up of volunteers. So I do appreciate everyone's willingness and ability to volunteer and then being welcoming to those that want to. So thank you. Yeah, that's worthy to get on the mic because I do think they need to hear that.
I feel bad, but I should mention our PTO is amazing. They now, because they're the whole district, they have little subcommittees for our buildings. And the things they're doing, the volunteer things that are kind of behind the scenes after the hours is, we all appreciate it so much. Between conference meals for our staff, snacks for our students for parties, there's just so many things they're doing. So I'm sorry, I forgot to mention them. But that's a huge volunteer group. And so, President, calm down. Everybody's just.
The PTO has really, really expanded in recent years and has been become very, not that the PTO has always been helpful, but they've really expanded their capabilities. And that's greatly appreciated.
Nothing else. We'll go to the next presentation. One of the things that Mr. Bozenberg will go through today, he's going to talk about health and safety and lock zone and AED preparedness. So there's some things that he'll give us an update on. I know we've had both in the environment for some time, but we're always studying and looking at the next steps. I know you have a nice presentation here, so I won't take anything away. And I'll let Mr. Bozenberg go through his presentation.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Wagner, for that introduction. Tonight, we just wanted to update the board on health and safety, and in particular, as Dr. Wagner said, the lock zone and AED preparedness. First, we'll start with what an AED is. So an AED is an automated external defibrillator. It's a device that analyzes heart rhythms, delivers shocks to restore normal cardiac function. Early use of an AED increases the odds of survival. So having them close and accessible is a key element to an effective safety plan. So that's one of the things we're always looking at. Where are they? How quickly can they be accessed? Who can access them? And just to give you a frame of reference, AEDs range in price from approximately fourteen hundred to nineteen hundred. You can find them a little bit cheaper. And of course, you can find them more expensive. And then there are ongoing maintenance costs with them to constantly make sure that the pads and batteries are not expired and that you replace those on a regular basis. So there is quite a bit of investment in AEDs. So first thing, I just wanted to give you a baseline of where we were in May of 2024. Johnstown schools had eleven functional AEDs. And you can see kind of how they were allocated throughout the district. There were three at the high school, two at the middle school, one at the intermediate, three at the elementary, one at the weight room, and one at the stadium. And a note here, one of the AEDs travels with the band. So it's stored in the band room, accessible during the day. But and we've had folks ask, you know, why don't all the teams travel with them? Well, most of our teams are traveling to another school, and they have AEDs, but sometimes are banned. As many students as we have, they're at the Miller Support Street Festival. They're not in a physical location with a known AED. And so they they travel with one. We're really kind of glad to have that security. One thing you should know, our school nursing staff, they complete the monthly checks of all the AEDs. They go around, they inspect them, they log that, they make sure that they're working, they check batteries and supplies and all of the expiration dates. Here's a timeline of our review process. On May twenty first, 2024, Mrs. Yoder actually emailed us. We were working with Mrs. Drummy and our budgeting process for the next year. And Mrs. Yoder sent us a complete inventory of all of our AEDs, their general condition, and what our needs were moving forward. Coincidentally, three days later, we had our first. needs were moving forward. Coincidentally, three days later, we had our first deployment of an AED at graduation. So this was something we were kind of already working on, and then we needed that. And as a reminder, it did a scan, but it did not deliver a shock. So and then in June of 2024, Mr. Todd McKee, who's a community member and parent with professional expertise in this area, he volunteered to conduct an AED audit in our district. So we spent an entire, you know, morning, we walked around to all the locations, he looked at them, he pulled them out, he checked our logs, what was in there, all of that, looked at all of our locations, and was really helpful with that. The findings were, he was really complimentary of our nursing staff and their checks of these devices. He was able to see monthly. It was initialed in every single case, and things were very organized and neat. And the expiration dates, they write right on there in Sharpie, the month and date of the expiration, and he was really impressed with that. He had some nice recommendations. Some were, in some of the cabinets, we would have everything in there, but it wasn't all attached to the bag. And one of his recommendations was, hook everything on there. So when there's an emergency, you grab it, you've got everything you might possibly need. That was a really nice recommendation, and we've implemented that. But his biggest recommendation was adding three AEDs to our fleet of 11 that we already had, and really in some high needs areas. So what I'm going to show you next are the locations we have AEDs in the district. So we'll start with the elementary school. You can see, we have an AED in the commons, right outside the gymnasium, and then we have one on each level of the academic wing. So near the restrooms and the centralized location in the hallways. We also have one at the North Athletic Fields in the dugout. So when coaches are there, they have access to that, the storage area at the end of the dugout. There's an AED located in there. Nurses check that on a regular basis. And then this is where, this campus we're on right now, this is where we have quite a few AEDs. So as you're looking at this map, anything in red is pre-Mr. McKee's audit. The three in yellow are what we added. So you'll see that there's three in the high school, two in the middle school, one in the weight room. The one in the stadium was the one we used during graduation, one at the intermediate school, and we've added one to the district office, which is accessible to anyone in the intermediate. They can get through there, but we thought it was important to have one in the district office, because we couldn't get through there unless you had a key. The PAC, that's a big one. We're really happy to have that there. We have a lot of visitors there for big events, and we now have one right in the lobby of the PAC. And a really interesting one, and one that we're really proud of, and think we'll do some good things, and we're kind of audit it this year and see if we need to add more, but we're gonna have our first outdoor AED. So it will be outdoor, outside of a building, in a heated electrified cabin. And so what that will allow is for us to leave it outside all spring, even if the temperature dips down to 15, 20 degrees, the heater kicks on and keeps those AED batteries to the temperatures they need to be to work properly. And that is going to be located where this yellow icon is, down by the band concession area. So any questions so far about the locations? The next thing I want to show you is, looking at a spot for that outdoor unit, we want to try to locate it centrally, but it needs to be near electricity as well. What you see on the screen there is a 650-foot radius from around that location, and that is a distance that can be walked in two minutes or by any sort of, any one of our student athletes. They can jog to that in under a minute. And so from anywhere in that area, some, you might have to route around the stadium, but it shows you we have pretty good coverage there. So we are, we should have that installed here in the next few weeks. We've been waiting on it from our vendor. It was caught up in some shipping issues, but we should have it very soon. So we'll work to electrify that. And the next slide is just a picture of what that electrified storage unit looks like, and the heating pad element that is inside the cabinet to keep that battery warm. So that is kind of our AED background, where we've been, where we are. Any questions about AEDs?
Well, in a public meeting like this, there's different types of do that. So we can, why don't we, um?
Yep, okay. So next, we transition into naloxone, and that's commonly referred to as Narcan, brand name Narcan, but naloxone is the medication. And that's a medication that rapidly reverses opioid overdoses by blocking the opioid receptors. Very easy to administer. This is a nasal spray, and there are no adverse effects if you are not, if you're administered the spray and you're not experiencing any sort of opioid-related issue, it's okay. Very minor side effects, if any at all. There is an increasing awareness about accidental exposure to powerful opioids. This is happening kind of more and more, where you accidentally come in contact with this, and you are experiencing an event. So we've had naloxone in the district for six, seven years now, but this will make it a little more visible and easily accessible to anyone. So if it's in the office, you don't need an administrator there with keys to get in there. The way you can make it more accessible is in a device called a nalox box. And this is an opioid rescue kit. It includes the naloxone, the breathing barrier gloves, and alcohol pads. We piloted one at the high school since last spring. It's gone really well. Obviously, haven't had to use it, but that was provided by the health department, and they are going to provide us with eight more for free. And we can probably mount them around the district near some of our AEDs. And just to give you an idea, this is likely what the, this campus will look like. So we'll have the one at the high school, one down by the outdoor kit, one at the stadium, each of the buildings, and the PAC lobby. Another one at the North Field near the AED, and one at the elementary. So, yeah, any questions?
Uh, I do, you?
No, go ahead. I noticed we don't have an AED at our maintenance. Is there a reason why?
Yeah, we could put one there. We generally, we look at the proximity. It's pretty close to the intermediate school. So generally, you want to be able to, there's a lot of different research, if you're looking at the American Heart Association, or what different people are putting out. But generally, if you can get to one in a minute or two, you're in really good shape. That's great coverage. We're always, it's a great question, because we're-
It just looks like we're kind of further away. I mean, we've kind of bridged the gap over here a lot. I guess I'm gonna use the Narcan along.
It's a really good, no, it's a really good question.
Vendors coming in there, but we also have our maintenance staff there.
Yeah. It's a great question, and one we're always looking at. The, one of the things we're always looking at is our budgeting. And this year, we budgeted for three AEDs and the outdoor cabin. We're already starting to look at budgets for next year. But also, when we met with Mr. McKee, who really has an expertise in this area, his recommendation was, if you add these three, you have really solid coverage for a school district. But that doesn't mean we're not looking to make improvements, and so, as you noted, thank you.
My question would be for Mr. Gant on this. Are we now sharing this with all coaches? Because as a coach, if you don't know where they are, you don't know where they are. So I think it'd be incredibly important, moving forward, that every coach that gets onboarded, volunteer, or paid, gets a copy of these maps. That way, because sometimes, you know, I've coached, obviously, and, you know, you're coaching the high school, but they move you to the North Field. I honestly didn't know we had one in the girls' softball dugout. So that'd be nice to know, in case, in case something happens. So I'd just like to make sure, moving forward, that all coaches at least get this information for all of them. Because you move around our campus, as you know, sometimes stuff occurs and you get moved for practice, and they may only know where theirs is at the field they typically practice on. But I think it'd be important to know where all of them are.
No, I think that's a great point, and I'm sure that's something Mr. Gant can make sure, if it's not already communicated, that it will be. So.
That raises a question about training, right? You know, who is trained to use it? How, you know, what kind of training program do we have for everyone? Because all these things, CPR is another important thing, right? So training becomes really an issue of who's qualified, and even CPR can be kind of scary, because, you know, one of my children won't CPR on the first of the day, and they actually lose more precision as well. But actually, practice to read while they're doing CPR. So, you know, all of that, it's better to have practice, practice to read than to die. But, you know, at the end of the day, training is very important.
You guys are loaded with excellent questions tonight. That's very, very important. One of the nice things is, is that all of our coaches, whether they're paid or volunteer, all go through the CPR and AED training. All of our staff members, through a program called Public School Works, where we do trainings at the beginning of every year on all sorts of things. One of them is AED and CPR instruction. And then all of our students, at one point, at least once during four years, will have hands-on, so they call it psychomotor, training in CPR. So they do not get full CPR certification, but they're trained in how to deliver compressions on a inflatable mannequin, and then watch the training videos. So it doesn't mean everyone has their full CPR certification, but we've all been trained in how to deploy those. So, yeah, it's something we take really seriously. And the, the nice thing about the AEDs is they're just so simple to use. I mean, you open them up, they turn on, and they tell you exactly what to do.
You gotta get on the mic. Only reason I say, so people at home can hear.
From an athletic standpoint, before the start of every season, Jeannie and I, we meet with coaches just to go over locations. So in the fall, when we added an AED to the softball dugout, coaches were given keys to be able to access it. But we do want to have more intentional conversations about it. But like Garrett said, we are doing a lot to train the board.
Excellent. Thank you.
Special update. Mr. Shipman just informed me that CPR at the high school starts next month. So students will be trained in that, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Bozenberg?
No, I appreciate the update, and, you know, obviously, a parent, you know, being willing to come up here who has expertise in the area and, you know, give some recommendations. And, you know, us being on top of it prior to needing it was nice. And then the fact that we're following through and expanding. So I do appreciate the administration's work on this, making sure we give everyone every opportunity that we can, if needed.
And the lax box can be a little controversial at times, too, and people have concerns about that. But the reality is, it's not often used. Sometimes it can be exposure to, you know, we could be in a backpack. It can happen. So that's, that's why those kids are there as well, too. It can be accidental exposure. And, you know, it would take a long look to see that occur more often than, like, it may happen. So that's one of the reasons we're expanding that area. And the Lincoln County Health Center have been great about all of this helping us.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Check with, it's a cycle. So that's all we have for questions.
Okay.
We have board committees.
Right. On board committees, athletics and extracurricular, that's myself and Ann. We met January 31st for a while.
We just talked about some opportunities of growing facilities, and looking at the more campus again, which I think we'd like to talk with the rest of the board in larger retreats, and all of that. And then we talked about baseball, which is in our agenda to vote tonight. That was presented to us. And good talk with Mr. Gant of the upcoming season, but also the current season and how long the coaches and teams have competed, and also positions in the game.
Yes.
And I think you're welcome to that.
And some proactive things that he's doing. So we talked about it together.
Yeah, it was excellent to hear. You know, we see a lot of the success of the programs in the newspaper, on the, you know, on the internet there. But to hear it all in one meeting is, it's impressive. The amount of success that we have seen in the 7 through 12 athletics and extracurriculars is just tremendous, from, you know, swimming, you know, the things that you don't typically always know about or hear, and, you know, some of our club sports. Obviously, the larger ones, we typically hear a little easier. But I do thank Mr. Gant for updating our Facebook page and, you know, keeping all that in there, because it does help those athletes be recognized and let the community know what's going on as well. I greatly appreciate the weekly schedule that you post, because that lets me know what I'm doing each week. So I do appreciate that as well.
And the community does. That's it. They want to feel a part of it, and some of them don't have any other way to find that information. So they are looking at your page.
And I did talk to Mr. Orsini before he left, and he said that the wrestling meet for the middle school this weekend was fantastic. He says, you know, we competed, we competed hard. But he said the overall operation was fantastic, and he was very grateful for the venue of the high school gymnasium for that. Want to thank, for those that don't know, we had a basketball game late on Friday against our rival, Northridge, who we defeated, which is always nice. And then the football team, and baseball team, and wrestling team, they all were there to lay out all the mats, get everything set up for an early morning wrestling event on Saturday morning. So there were 30 or 40 kids out there in the gymnasium at 9:30 on a Friday night, rolling out mats, taping them down, setting up tables and chairs and helping out. And it wasn't just the wrestling program. It was football, baseball. It was all, you know, basketball players, after they finished their game, came out and helped. So it's great to see the athletes helping other athletes. And it was, it was male and female. Every, you know, there was a good group of folks out there, making it possible for the middle school program to have a wrestling event on a Saturday, Sunday here. So that's great to see our kids helping each other out, being willing. And really, they were having fun while they were doing it.
We didn't have building schedules, as I said, we were thinking about that, but we had to change the schedule. We did have a curriculum meeting this February.
So Amanda was not able to attend. She was under the weather. And we had it, we gave her the option, and we went ahead and had it. We talked about the great things that are going on in the school district and all the school buildings. There's some after-school tutoring going on, there's some before-school tutoring going on, and it's great to hear the success, and that the attendance is high for all of that. And I think as school board members, we always like that, to get that feedback, to see how things are going. And so we put good things about that. We have the Medic Solutions Transition Thursday night?
Thursday night.
It'll be Thursday night, so parents will be affected. They won't be able to log in. Staff will be, and students, if they log in, they'll be affected. But then Friday, it should be back up. And then we're talking about the program of studies. There was a survey, so we went over some of those results from there, which was interesting. The, what the kids surveyed, and at the top of their list, was the polar opposite of what the parents surveyed. I found that to be very intriguing, so.
Hopes and dreams.
That's right. I think that's how it goes in our own household, too. So it was interesting to hear some of the potential technical career program. I don't see them on the agenda, so I'm not sure that I'm supposed to say anything yet, because we're working on those details. We don't have a, we don't have any.
Yeah, we, right, we pulled it off the agenda, because we want to see that CTEC kids just be formal, that they'll go through their vote first.
So I won't say anything. But that's, I'm positive.
Yeah. I don't think it's a big thing, because I just want to respect, respect the process of CTEC vote first.
It's a good meeting. Thank you, Mr. Shipman. It's a cycle there.
Yep. And then we didn't have finances, we didn't have anything scheduled. We do have an insurance meeting coming up, but that's about 10 days from now. But we did have a policy meeting. As a reminder, on the agenda, it shows that it would be, we had one on the seventh, but we did not, as I said earlier. But we did have a policy meeting on January 3rd and 4th. But we did have a policy meeting on January 3rd and 4th.
No, and I didn't bring my notes, so I'm gonna go off of memory. I, I think, I, I think I can manage this. We are working through Miola updates from October. I'm getting head nods. And we're just starting through those. And the majority of those were the zero section, which is bylaws. It's like, it's, it's been a minute. So, yeah, the majority of those were bylaws, which is good timing because January, when we have our organizational meeting and all of that, just sort of shoring up and making sure, just some tiny tweaks and things to our procedurals are up to date in the, in the bylaws.
Can we go back to insurance and to kind of skip insurance? I just have one comment or a couple of comments about insurance. It's not a subject that we all enjoy. Usually you run away from insurance meeting. However, our claims are high, our premiums are be, are suffering, they're being eaten out. I'm concerned about that. I'm more concerned when we have insurance meetings at the board calls that we have them locally. We need to be sure those building reps, the insurance committee is full. We need to have you attend. It's not about whether we offer insurance. We offer very good insurance, but we have to watch our costs. We obviously belong to a consortium, we're fortunate, that helps us a lot. I remember years when the school district board was not insurable. Insurance people came to our meetings and they said, your claims are too high, your premiums aren't covered, you're running 130% over your premiums. You just can't do that. It's not a subject I enjoy. I'm married into it, so that's why I can't put anything. The consortiums then were born in Ohio and that helped the school districts become insurable. So I just want to be sure the building reps that are nominated for the insurance committee come and help us as a board, look at what our insurance policy looks like, what are our benefits, what are our coverages? What can we do to help control those costs? We have to do that. It's not an option. So I just wanted to encourage all of us to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. We did have the strategic planning here, technology development and construction project. That was on January 31st. I was gonna say, I think that's kind of horse camp secret, right? In terms of notes and all this. That was a big part of our, and technology we did not have. It was a professional development committee. That occurred on January 21st. Those in attendance were St. Louis, Ricky, Laura Kurtz, Renee Britton, and that price, Brad Girmann, Michael Shipton. During the meeting, they did approve, well, they did return one individual professional development plan to a staff member for modification. And they also looked at licensure renewals, licensure renewals. And they had 10 people who are approved for licensure renewals. And then they also looked at professional contact hours for teachers and instructors. They did that for all four buildings. And then their next meeting is on February 20th. And then we'll be at the JAS conference room, after school briefing.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda.
Resolution 25 dash 02 dash 025 is a group of consent agenda.
I'll motion. Second.
Please.
So we have a resignation. It's intended to be reset with the food service, which is really good. But we appreciate she's been here since she got me. Thank you, school here, Michael. Kevin Sir, he works with her daily. We have some unpaid days there and we'll talk about those specifically. We have a food services substitute, that's on the agenda. We have people activity employment. Most of those names you won't know, except that we'd like to ask Mr. Gannon. Ask Mr. Gannon to come up and introduce one of our, you, one of our candidates. She's named Mark Herehart, varsity girls soccer head coach. And we participated in the interview process. Mr. Gannon, you can go up and talk a little bit and introduce our respective future coach for varsity girls soccer. So we have a few people to introduce tonight that I thought if we could hear. Volunteers. Talking about volunteers tonight, I always appreciate some support there. So they're on your agenda across that, even on the next page. Indoor track, wanted to highlight that. That's not something we typically held as a club sport. But we're asking the board to approve that tonight. We actually have some students who compete at the state level and we need them to be recommended. So we're asking the board to approve that. And then we have four meeting minutes. We have that, two of those on January 13th. January 23rd, January 27th. We have the monthly finance reports. Mrs. Rem, if you have to answer any questions about the consent agenda there.
Any questions or comments on any of this? Call the roll.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes. Welcome aboard, coach. You'll see a lot of me. My son plays on the boys soccer team. You'll see me at the soccer games a lot.
It was not a, I know.
I figured I'd explain that.
We all know.
To the treasurer?
Treasurer's action item. Resolution 2502 dash 026 would be to authorize payment of $10,000 for signs of reading stipends. This would be to those staff who are required to participate in training but are ineligible for the Ohio Department of Education's roles of receiving similar training in the past.
If I get a motion.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
I think we all understand what this is and what, any questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
And next resolution, 25 dash 02 dash 027 would be to approve the rates and amounts as determined by the Licking County Budget Commission and further authorize certification to the Licking County auditor.
I get a motion.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
This is pretty standard. Any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Resolution 25 dash 02 dash 028 are over to the United Field Trip for baseball. Tennessee, March 22nd through March 35th.
I'll make a question.
I can get a second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
We did have a schedule. At work, I mean, I would buy schedule. There were actual things scheduled, scrimmages, I shouldn't say scrimmages, practices, they have just local high school field. So there was definitely some updates from the fourth seat.
Any other questions, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Next resolution is 25 dash 02 dash 029 Cornell School Letter of Intent.
I can get a motion?
I'll motion.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, talk about this really. Okay, I think we have some Cornell representatives here. Sidney Sittes here, Cindy Reeves, and Neil Number.
Yep, I think you got them all. You named four, so.
Anyways, you know, we've been talking about Cornell School for some time. We're, have a little bit of a complication in things because we're trying to make sure that we have a deed for the building and that doesn't quite, you know, exist right now. Here's a process called affidavit and title and it's gonna take a little bit of time. It's a specialized area law, as you would expect, so we're working on that. So what we're asking the board to approve tonight is a letter of intent from the friends of Cornell School. This is a step in this process. It probably will still be at least a couple of months. Depending on the process it needs to follow to get the affidavit and title. But in the meantime, if the board approves this tonight, this letter of intent would also allow us to look at the maintenance schedule, working with Cornell, friends of Cornell, and then we can start to take over some operational responsibilities of the building. And then we can be toward this larger step. And again, that'll take a couple of months from now, depending on the legal process. Can't be answering any questions from the board, I have, I know you.
I'm actually, I probably want to choose it, but, so.
It's actually, it's actually.
We moved it and it's a one-room schoolhouse and we were showing the historical factor.
It's actually a very nice facility, so the, we're gonna use it as one of our. But yeah, there's full electric in there. There's not fiber in there right now, so that's something we're talking about. And then the board eventually approved it, once we get that next step. Wi-Fi in there will take control of the HPC system, will put it all. Right now it's all air and we have to manage that. So yeah, all those will be upgrades. But it's, it also helps us in some ways. We should hold a meeting here.
I was just gonna say, I would love to tour it.
We'll do a tour. We have some, some people.
I haven't been there, so maybe curriculum meeting.
Maybe we need to have a curriculum meeting there.
We'll do that. Maybe we'll have a board meeting.
We'll do a board meeting.
Do a board meeting.
They have a really nice, down in the basement, we could use.
Basement's really, the basement is really, it's ceiling.
And it's gotta be 12 feet tall. How, I mean, it's tall.
Like 17 course of break or something. It's, it's really a neat space. Yeah, it's very nice. We'll have a board meeting here someplace, maybe at the work section or something. But yeah, anyways, it's been a great partnership. So if you approve this tonight, then it'll be one step in the process, the letter of intent. And we'll keep working on our larger, secure that affidavit and title.
Excellent. Any other questions, any comments from the board?
Yeah.
Well, we thank you guys for taking care of it up to this point, so we appreciate that. Want to get?
Cindy, you wanna?
Only 'cause people at home can't hear you.
She just delegated.
Did a memorandum of understanding proposal, which all the board members have a copy of this. It, it outlines a lot of the things that Dr. Wagner was talking about in addition to the maintenance schedule that he, we had a meeting about with Dr. Wagner and Derek. And so we just wanted the public to know that we have gone through all the proper procedures in order to accomplish this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Will your group continue to improve yourself and do the tours if we should?
Yes, as part of the memorandum of understanding, we will continue operating. We have school marms that do the, the school visitations and things. So yes, that will continue.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
We'll keep the board updated. Call the roll.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Resolution 25 dash 02 dash 030 is adoption of specialization model policies and procedures.
If I can get a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
This is a requirement by the state of Ohio, a relatively new requirement. So the board, all boards of education are required either develop their own or adopt this policy. If you adopt your own, you can have it approved by the state. You're supposed to do that by March 30th. And then the cadence should be the staple of producing these on a more frequent basis by November 30th.
Any questions, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Resolution 25 dash 02 dash 031 is approval of a contract with New York City School District, Chance Light Academy.
Get a second?
I'll second.
No, it's, it's, we don't talk a lot about it, so some identified needs that we can't meet.
Want to call the roll, please?
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Resolution 25 dash 02 dash 032, open enrollment for the 25, 26 school year.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
And a second.
I'll second.
This resolution and the next one, 033 are related. What this is just accentuating is that we will have no more open enrollment for grades K through 10. And the next resolution closes enrollment the following year for grades 11. This was one of the objectives the board identified years ago, especially as preparing to grow and getting ready for expanded facilities. So there's been limitations on.
Any questions, comments? It's just continuing the mo- model that we've set in place five, six years ago. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Resolution 25 dash 02 dash 033, open enrollment for the 26, 27 school year.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
As I already did.
Any questions, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Resolution 25 dash 02 dash 034 is Ohio High School Athletic Association.
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
What we're asking the board to do is just approve the membership in the OHSAA for the upcoming school year, which is the 25, 26 school year as well as the dance.
So would there be any recent membership rules that I can announce about yet?
I do not believe that.
No announcement yet.
We're aware of that, but we'll watch that as we move on.
Any other questions, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Resolution 25 dash 02 dash 035 is secondly being revised policies. Resolution 25 dash 02 dash 035 is second reading revised policies.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution 25 dash 02 dash 036, second reading to rescind policies.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments on these? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Position 25 dash 02 dash 037, second reading replacement policies.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Questions or comments on these, replacing the previous? Call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Position 25 dash 02 dash 038, second reading of new policies.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Position 25 dash 02 dash 039, first reading revised policies.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments on first readings? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Position 25 dash 02 dash 040, first reading to rescind policies.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Position 25 dash 02 dash 041, first reading of replacement policies.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Resolution 25 dash 02 dash 042, first reading of new policies.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Board comments? Anything?
Did we hear how the electrical, the electrician student did at the competition? The life's business.
Did we hear how, this would be from Mr. Shipton, how our CTEC student for electrical, did we hear how he did in the competition? Played second? Excellent.
That's fantastic.
He'll go move on.
Give me an update now.
Yeah, I'll get you, I'll get you an update on that. I'll get the dates for when the. Yeah, I think it's at the convention center downtown, his estates, and he has qualified, so. I'll get you that information. It'd be great if the teacher could just do a quick clip of what they're doing, just so we could see. Yeah. The competition, because I'm assuming the instructor's there while they do it. Yes, they are, there, I know there's two portions, there's the application portion, then there's also a written portion as well. Okay. That'd be great, the application, I don't need to see him write. We'll get that to you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and thanks for bringing, I had been thinking about him as well. I'd love to see it maybe on our social media too, because that's something I think that we're all really proud of, that that, for that student.
It's a huge honor and you just have no idea. I don't even know, but I, I can't imagine wanting to see, you know, here's my bucket of stuff. And I've got to put it together.
Some extraneous parts in there too.
That's right, there were extra, there were extra bars. So they were trying to trick you and, so we're very proud of him and we'd like to hear more about him. And we wish him luck.
Well, my board comment is simple, I'd like to wish my beautiful wife Beth a happy birthday today, so. I'm spending her birthday at the board office, so.
Now you can go home.
That's right.
You can go to dinner, it's so time.
It's gonna, she probably ate without me at this point, but I'll see her later, I took her to dinner yesterday, so.
He knew.
Any other board comments?
A lot of things to celebrate, we had, I know you referenced Mr. Swager, but we had the Northridge Plaque, Northridge, we did that on Friday night. I will tell you that, and I won't split it up between the districts, but it was tremendous in terms of what was raised, cash and, and it's about $4,300 it looks like in cash and then almost 10,000 food items, so between the two districts. And that occurred just October 7th through the 11th, so, you know, Johnstown won, but really everyone went to this, you know, and I think oftentimes people forget that they're, you know, think about, have their people. So that's, it's a tremendous effort, it really does, exemplify how well our students do. And I think it's the community, it's a great way for them to give back. But the plaque is well done, that's, on Friday night, you know, robotic dog helped a little bit with that. We couldn't fit the plaque on the dogs, we tried that.
They don't kind of. Delivering candles?
They had, well, they're not that, it's not that articulate.
They did a push-up contest against the robot dog. Kids did, the students were trying to help, you know. Clearly, the robot dog is much better at push-ups than anyone else. It was a competition.
There was a young middle schooler, Houston, Gant, who did fairly well, but that dog could keep going.
Yeah, that dog does not give up, does it?
No.
Dog was fully charged.
It was fully charged.
It was better, yeah.
Right.
So again, that was all well done. We bus service, this is Love the Bus Celebration, and they have an event scheduled on February 27th from 11:30 at the Hydrate Golf Club, or Golf House there, and we'll probably go, like we did last year. It's always nice to recognize our station department, they work every day for us and sometimes they put the weather in the challenging conditions, so we appreciate their support.
I might point out something on our bus drivers too, that for those that don't, you see several of them at our community events, even outside of their own time and hours, not all of them even live in the community, you know, and they come to the events, I was at the girls' basketball game the other day and there were three bus drivers there that don't live in the city, that were there just to watch the event and enjoy it, so. A lot of our bus drivers go above and beyond, not just at work, but they're part of the community, so I do appreciate seeing them at the events and they really get to know our kids.
Yeah, they do, and even with the basketball review approved, we've got some support there too, because they needed a licensed CDL driver and one of our drivers was going to have. Yeah, you have a great point. Believe it or not, and we'll start talking a little bit about the 25, 26 school year. Already, getting ready for kindergarten registration, going very early this year, so. This is why Chris Grant is cast here with this, so our first open enrollment will be February 23rd. It's going to have the 23rd and 24th, it's an exceptional half events on both those nights. We're getting people organized. We'll keep the board updated about the history of the campus. We have a lizard game coming up, that's a big BTO function that we're. Okay, it's online if you want to see the lizard, we added up here, we're going to show it.
Hello, Donnie, so I'm here too if you want to.
Yeah, oh yeah. I sent a, you know, this is mentioned a little bit, we sent a parent message out tonight and we sent a staff message about the transition from lack in the meta, so that will happen, I know you mentioned that already. Mrs. Thomas, but the, that'll happen Thursday night, we said Friday morning will probably happen earlier, but we're hoping for one of those situations, they're planning for it, that will overpromise and deliver much sooner than. We should not blackout that long. Happens with the transition. Good, plus we have to get it on Friday. We'll be sending other updates, I'm going to ask the principals to push that same message I said to families tonight, and then we have a few more staff messages. Calamity Days Updates, this one, it's a, questions about, just to keep the record here, we used three full days, ready at the elementary and the high school, we used four days at intermediate and middle school. And additional day for middle school and intermediate because of the electrical outage at time and it just. We'll be celebrating, we talked a bit about CTEC, yeah, we will be celebrating. Lots to celebrate there, it's a recognition of our CTEC. Mrs. Thomas, you did talk a little bit about it, but we expect to have the MOU, possibly the next memorandum of understanding of CTEC. We don't want to get too far out in front of the reference curriculum. We believe there's a possibility we could offer a health science pathway in our high school in the coming year, a part of that program would be a state tested nursing assistance program too, so students can walk away with minimally a state certification, and then also health pathways. We're looking at that right now, you referenced Mr. Shipton's needing the survey process on that, and we're getting ready with the program of studies, which we'll probably be able to bring to you in the next board meeting also. But definitely more available there, even pursuit, interest in survival, perhaps, I think, so. Appreciate the board's support and continuing to expand opportunities for students. For then, we'll also, you know, new building will be, our new addition will be. House, we said, that's the, we will, health sciences program. And I think that's, yeah, seriously questionable. Oh, I should say, thank you again for approval of the city's, yeah. Been working on that since the fall, and that's been a lot of work and I'm really, there's going to be so many good things if you talk about that, especially athletically and for the entire community, so thank you. The board, we're, their work is supportive.
Any additional comments? If I can get a motion to adjourn?
Call motion. Okay.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.